I call the order of the regular meeting of the Township Morris Planning Board for October 7, 2024. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying saying will be executed. Would you please rise for the pleasure of the board?
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Jim. Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Quillen?
Here.
Mr. Rieglia?
Here.
Mr. By?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Slate?
Here.
And I'm so in Santiago here.
Okay, thank you. Before we start with the meeting, I'd like to pause for a moment of silence on this October 7 anniversary of being back on the table last year. Memories of all of the lives lost and those still in January are in jeopardy. So please one more silence. Thank you. We can move on with the reading of the minutes or the approval of the minutes from.
August 19?
Yes, August 19. Anyone have any comments, directions, issues? Do I have a motion approved?
I move we approve the minutes.
Uh, just, I guess, two things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I think Bill and I were not actually present. So we'll move into the absent column and abstained from the vote.
And neither was I.
It's okay, we can still vote on it.
Was I here?
Well, let's see if you were there. Says you were there.
That would look familiar to me.
Right, I'll believe it.
If you were.
Donna, it says you were present as well, but you're not.
I was not.
Oh, okay.
I stand corrected.
There was a correction. You have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it.
I made a motion.
Mr. Quillen.
Why did?
Yes, did. On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved.
And a handful of abstentions.
Yes, that's what a handful. Okay. Uh, so now the agenda, there are two applications here, but I understand we're only hearing one. Here we have a.
And I think if I may, Mr., we're carrying the one, right?
Yes.
Yes, so we actually have counsel for both applications here this evening. So maybe she could speak to it, but it's my understanding that we're carrying the CHC Madison Project Owner LLC application PBO 4-24 to, is it October 21?
Yes.
The 7:30, excuse me, 7:00 PM, the same location. And I believe that will be with, with further notice. But maybe Mrs. Hurley can explain that with the chair's permission.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. There was a, there was a notice inadvertently omitted to the county. So we had to, we had to renotice and include the county, so.
And that'll be renotice both publication and certified mail?
And certified mail to everyone.
So with full renotice?
Yes.
For October 21?
It's already on its way, so I apologize to those who get two notices, but.
Thank you. So then Sonya, could you introduce the PBO 524?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next application, PBO 524 Morris Marketplace Urban Renewal LLC for a major subdivision, block 10401, lot 301, 191 East Hanover Avenue in the RDP Zone. I think I can propose a major subdivision to create one additional lot.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
With respect to that application, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient and found it to be timely served both by way of certified mail September 25 and published in the official newspaper on September 24, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So we do have jurisdiction to hear and decide this application tonight.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Linda Hurley with the firm. Sure, of Riker Danzig on behalf of the applicant. As Sonya mentioned, we're here tonight for the, an approval of a subdivision application to create two lots from the existing Morris Marketplace site. This application is similar, very similar to the application that was before you approved last September, which subdivided the, the Lidl building and a portion of the, of the site. This proposal is to carve out what is on, known on the plan or is commercial G and a portion of the parking area as well. This proposed new lot will be continued to be owned by the applicant in this instance. The Lidl application, as you may recall, was a minor subdivision. This one has been classified as a major solely because of the timing of it. Your ordinance, as many do, say that if you bring a subsequent subdivision application within three years of your, of a minor, it's classified as a major. To prevent a large, you know, a large property from being subdivided into multiple lots by way of one minor after, after the other without notice potentially to, to residents. So I'll say it's a technical major, similar to the, to the Lidl subdivision. It's really just lines on a, on a piece of paper and there'll be no physical changes to the site. In connection with the, the prior subdivision, the applicant had recorded a cross easement agreement. That agreement's in place and does not need to be amended or changed. It contemplated potential future subdivisions. So the, the parking and everything that was taken care of in that agreement remains in, in effect and would apply with respect to, to these new lots. And with that, we have one witness tonight, our engineer, Anand Bhatt, who's been the engineer of record for the application since, I think, the beginning. So I would call Anand unless there's any other initial questions or, or issues.
Well, while we hear from him and then we can.
Sure.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll, with your permission, I'll swear in as well as our board professionals, Mr. Slate and Ms. Keller, if all three of you will raise your right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anand, go ahead. Here, I'm going to share this.
Just repeat your qualifications again, though.
Sure. Good evening, board members. My name is Anand Bhatt. I'm with RNA Engineering, I'm principal at RNA Engineering. I have bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering and a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2003. My license is in good standing.
And you've prepared for the board before?
I have been.
Yes, I will accept.
Thank you.
If you would describe for the board, you prepared the subdivision plan that was submitted as part of this application, correct?
I did.
And if you would explain to the board the subdivision that's proposed?
As, as Mrs. Hurley, as Hurley suggested or stated, there are two lots already existing at Morris Marketplace right now. One is Lidl Lot, one is the overall 3.01 lot, which is 16.8 acres plus or minus. And that is being subdivided into two lots. One is for Burlington, which is Reed Commercial G, which is 1.52 acres. And the remaining, sorry, remaining lot is 15.362 acres, which is going to be 3.01.
I'm sorry, the remaining lot is 15.
1362 acres.
362.
Yep. Yeah, Sonya, can we have?
Can we have exhibit one?
Thank you. That's the exhibit which we have submitted as part of the application process. We, as noted, a portion in, again, hash area in this middle area, which is the commercial G, is at 1.52 acres of Burlington area. The rest is a site which is, which includes the commercial A, B, C, D, and I, including F, will continue to remain in lot number 3.01, which is going to be 15.362 acres. Lidl Lot has been subdivided, so this is very similar to Lidl Lot, as Mrs. Hurley suggested. Number of parking spaces which are included in the Burlington will be shown as part of this lot of 1.52 acres. However, with the rest of the easement on for the entire site, all the parking spaces will be available for, for all the occupant or the patrons to use.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but can you just give us the exact title and date of the plan that's up? It's exhibit A1?
Absolutely. It's called Major Subdivision Plan Drawing Number CS 202. And that's dated September 3. I want to zoom in. Let me see. September 3, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
So again, as I said, everything remains in place. We have been in front of the TCC meeting with Mr. Slate and Mr. Phillips there. We have received the TCC comment letter, and one of the comment was related to the, how it's shown and described on this plan. It was recommended that we show a colored version of this plan so that board can clearly make out where the new lots, a new lot is going to be, whereas the, where the existing lots going to remain. So the next plan, which is exhibit A2, and that is dated, it is in same name, Major Subdivision Plan, CS 202, with a revision date of today, this October 7, 2024. That would be exhibit A2.
And the only revision is the addition of the color to it, correct?
Correct. So we just wanted to kind of verify for the board that the, the orange lot is the larger lot to remain, the blue lot is the Lidl Lot, which was subdivided last year, and the green, which is in the middle, is the Burlington Lot, which is the application for.
Do you want to go through the rest of the TCC?
The TCC comments were, again, the three comments which were, again, the only comment which was pertaining to the lot color was adding the color. And there was a, on the title block, there was a number of lots which were carried from the original application. So it, the number of lots, which is the lot number 3.01, 3.06, and 3.07, has been modified, which is at the, where it says Morris Marketplace, right underneath that.
And for the record, we did receive two mellows from the.
Fire Department?
Yep. And neither one had any.
No.
Officially, the new one, the Lidl Lot is 306, and the new one is 307. And not 301 is 30.
The Lidl is 30.
301 is the remaining.
Is the remaining lot. Yes, we do still need to confirm that it will be 307 with the tax assessor, but it's 301 remains the remainder, and it is 306 for Lidl. So we believe it'll be 307, but we do need to confirm that.
And that was comment number four of Mr. Phillips, September 30, 2024, TCC meeting summary memo?
Correct.
Okay, and the colorization.
It's gone.
Was that comment number two?
Yes.
And comment number one, I apologize, it didn't ask the chair's permission, but since I'm rolling, Mr. Chairman, may.
No.
I think it's speak now or forever. The, the filing of subdivision map is required, obviously, you'll stipulate to that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and there's also a comment with respect to all outstanding non-residential development fees, as well as any other fees that may be outstanding or may become outstanding. How do you propose to address that?
Those will be, we agree to a condition that those will be paid prior to the signing of the subdivision.
Prior to this board or its chair or designated officer signing off on any subdivision deed or plat, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. And they will, those fees and funds will be paid in full prior thereto, correct?
Prior to the signature, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done rolling for now.
Mr. Slate, go ahead.
I would just add that the township surveyor would review the final plat when it's submitted to ensure that it has all the information in it. And then we also have to include language, maybe this is something that was coded with financial agreement, will need to be updated just to reflect this separate lot. And I have no other comments.
And that, that's the financial agreement with respect to the redevelopment, since this was a redevelopment project, correct? Would you stipulate to those conditions as well, counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a few questions. The, the first one is just what is the overall purpose of this subdivision from the point of view of the applicant? What does this accomplish? I believe you said the applicant would retain title to the subdivided lot?
The applicant plans to retain title, yes. Potentially for fight, separate financing purposes. It could, it could be separate ownership, that's not the intent right now at least, but for separate financing and/or ownership.
And I guess my next question might be more for Mr. Warner, which is the distinction between a minor subdivision and a major subdivision. And as a member of the planning board, maybe I should know this, but what are the different requirements for a major versus a minor subdivision? And are these different, do these cause different levels of review for us?
All good questions, as always. The, the, a major subdivision, generally, this would be a minor subdivision from two lots to one. Our particular ordinance, and Ms. Keller is probably pulling it up right now and can answer it better than me from reflection, but, a, a recollection, but the reason this is a major as opposed to a minor is to avoid what I sometimes and others refer to as creeping minor subdivisions, where you get serial minor subdivisions, one after another after another, and someone avoids a major subdivision review by doing it that way. Minor subdivisions don't always require the same notice and the like. So you could see why that, why we are, as always, on top of things and have an ordinance that prevents that from happening. And I think it's, you're allowed one minor, so to speak, every three years, or else we're going to assume you're doing the creep and, and consider it a major. Now, that said, maybe I could defer to Ms. Keller to explain the distinctions between major and minor and the magnitude of the review. They're relatively subtle.
Yeah, so essentially, you know, the municipal land use law provides for minor subdivisions, minor site plans, major subdivisions, major site plans. However, and it sets the noticing requirements for each of those. However, it's up to each individual municipality to decide how you want to apply those. So in Morris Township, you know, for example, a minor subdivision typically is anything that's, you know, not more than three lots, it doesn't have any new streets, typically minor things. However, you know, if you have a minor subdivision that doesn't have any variances associated with it, you don't really, you don't always have to, I believe you don't have to do any kind of public notice.
You don't, yeah, under the MLUL.
Under the MLUL. So that's, so that's, they're kind of, they're sort of like two separate, like parallel, but not totally combined tracks, which is the MLUL setting the notice requirements and the municipality defining what's major and minor. So per the MLUL, however, you do have to notice for a major subdivision. So, you know, while typically they are, you know, more major projects, things with new streets, more lots, et cetera, the, the township has the ability to, you know, say that something like this, where if you are, you know, proposing another subdivision within three years of one, it cannot, it is then a major subdivision. Because that way, you will have to notice for it. And so what, you know, what Steve's talking about with, you know, the creep, subdivision creep, would be if you have this property and you all of a sudden, and this isn't just for this lot in particular, this could be any lot, and you, and it meets the requirements for a minor subdivision, you don't need variances, but then, you know, one day you look up, the neighbors realize that it's now six lots, and they haven't gotten a single notice in the mail because they were all minor. So that's really the purpose of classifying this as a major subdivision.
Okay.
And just, 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 there's the last thing, just to say quickly, is that in terms of the specifications, you know, like the completeness checklist, the development checklist, things like that, for a major subdivision are more complex because it's created for a more complex application, things like street profiles, et cetera, that Jim will typically review. However, in something like this, where none of those things are happening, you know, the applicant can request waivers from those like they do with anything else. So from that standard, as long as none of those are part of this application, which they are not, it doesn't really change the board's review.
Okay, that was very helpful, thank you.
I would also just mention that a minor, maybe this is something you were just going to say, can be filed by deed.
Yes.
Just a description of a lot, you know, can be filed to create a lot. With a major, a score will file that and be created a little more involved.
So I do worry a little bit about creeping minor or major subdivisions because it seems like we do have a creep underway here.
Well, we may not, and I may, and, and counsel for applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, or better yet, confirm that I'm correct. When I say this, it's my recollection that this is it for this applicant. They're limited to this, I guess, second minor that has become a major subdivision vis a vis the financing purposes. It was Lidl and Burlington and no more, as I recall.
That is correct. There had been some discussion early on when we were, before we came in for the, the Lidl, Lidl, I'm sure I always say it wrong, the Lidl subdivision, as to how many there might be. And it was agreed that, or understood that after that, we would be back for one further, and that's this one there, no further.
But nothing stops you from making another application?
The redevelopment agreement.
The redevelopment plan specified only to?
Yeah, limited in the agreement, yeah.
Redevelopment agreement.
Redevelopment.
The redevelopment plan does allow for this type of financing subdivision, but the, you know, because it's a redevelopment project, there's an extra layer of protection for, between the township and the redeevelper. And it's part of that redevelopment agreement, I believe, is where this is codified, or will be codified, that they cannot do any more subdivisions after this.
We have the ordinance.
They'd have to amend that if they wanted to change anything.
We have the ordinance that prevents the creep, so to speak, by virtue of converting the minor to a major for more further review. And then we have the, the redevelopment agreement and the, and the understanding as between the township and the applicant owner of the property that this is it.
Okay, so if something more were needed, that would have to go to the township committee for an amendment of the redevelopment.
Correct, they would have to amend an agreement before they could even apply to the board.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this was discussed with the last subdivision. I want to be sure I get it right. So the services, since this could be sold as a separate lot to a separate entity, the trash services, night lights, or other services, snow removal, how will that be maintained, even if it's sold to somebody else?
Sorry. That's all covered in, that's all part of the reciprocal easement agreement that was recorded with respect to the, the entire property simultaneous with, simultaneously with or as a condition to the perfection of the Lidl subdivision. So that it'll continue to operate as just one shopping center.
So anyone who purchases this property will have to agree to this.
The property is, it runs with the land, the property is subject to this agreement. So anyone who purchases the property takes it subject to that, to that agreement.
Okay, thank you. So the trash removal area that's designated now will continue to stay there, and it'll, no one will notice the difference?
Correct, correct. And if anybody wanted to change, I mean, that would be a site plan change, so someone would have to come in and, and get permission from this board to change the site, but nothing will change.
Okay.
There'll be note, yeah.
And I neglected to mention, we do have a, we always have a condition of approval that all prior conditions of approval not inconsistent with this approval will remain in full force and effect, and I assume the applicant will stipulate to that as well.
Yeah.
No?
I'm sorry, what?
All prior, all prior conditions.
Yes.
Of approval will remain, to the extent not inconsistent with this approval.
Yes.
If it's granted.
Yes.
Would remain in full force and effect.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple quick questions.
Sure.
So if there's no present intention to sell this subdivided lot, assuming the board approves it, however, if in the future it is sold, will be, will there be an easement that will allow the larger lot, users of the larger lot, the stores with those lots to use the parking?
So that's all part of the reciprocal easement agreement. It speaks to parking, access, there's an association that, that handles maintenance and trash, so it's, yes, it's, and it's all, so it's already in place. It was reviewed by Mr. Warner prior, again, with part of the, the first subdivision was recorded, and so it will apply to this, this lot as well.
Okay. And then my second question, it appears that there are a fair number of parking spaces that would go with this new subdivided lot. Does this trigger the need to have additional EV charging stations? Now, this, this is technically a separate Lidl subdivision?
So the redevelopment plan that allows for the subdivision is specific in that if, if the lot is to be subdivided, it doesn't have, each individual lot does not have to independently comply. The TCC asked us in connection with the Lidl application, and again, just to show for informational purposes, how many parking spaces would be quote unquote, you know, part of the new lot? And we've done that, but we don't need a variance because of any, any deficiency. Again, because the intent is the shopping center is continuing, is going to continue to be operated and run as a, as one shopping center, and the cross easement gives everyone the ability to, to park and access. So it doesn't change anything, so it doesn't make any changes, doesn't trigger any additional EV. And the, and the number of parking spaces, again, it's looked at as, through the redevelopment plan as a whole, as opposed to individual lots.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I, I, I agree, agree with everything she just said. I just would also add, you know, that this is anything that either this owner, whether they keep this, whether they sell it to another entity, any changes that they would make to floor area, to the parking layout, anything, you know, even like we just mentioned, the location of the traction closure, all of those are, would trigger site plan approval, site plan amendments. So, you know, no changes are, you know, this is really just on paper for now, and all of these protections, like the easements are there to ensure that there, that everything keeps running the way that it has been.
Anyone else? Okay, I will, I guess, note for the record that the. Anything you want?
No, I have nothing further, don't. Thank you, thank you.
There are no members of the public here, so.
Yes, yes.
I guess I don't have to open it up for public questions or public comment. So we can proceed, I guess. Somebody?
There's a brief summation from.
I don't have anything further, I don't.
I just want to make sure I understand that 306 is confirmed for Lidl, but 307, you're still working with the tax assessor?
Yes.
So our approval will have it stated as 307 for now and will be revised if the tax assessor comes up with something else.
Subject to the tax assessor's approval and whatever lot the tax assessor wants it to be is what.
Okay, all right.
Whatever the number, yes.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the application.
Second?
I'll second.
Followed whole sign?
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byn?
Yes.
Someone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, is there anything legislative here? Do we have a legislative?
Not, this is not.
Okay, then the only other item of business is the review of the calendar. Somebody sent that out. And she had a couple of questions on the date, I don't see, but she made the notes. There's one that would be kind of scheduled for the 7th, St. Patrick's Day, and another one.
So this is officially St. Patrick's Day?
I have no objection to St. Patrick's Day.
So, I don't know, Mr. Quinn said it was a high holy day, so. I don't know.
How about anyone else? I have no objection to St. Patrick's Day.
So, the Sukkot Eve, what is that?
Sukkot, that's a code. It's a harvest holiday. It's not a high holiday, but it's close to high. It's, and observant Jews would be unable to be here.
Which means that an applicant was an observant Jew, they could not want that evening.
For example, I have, I have, in another municipality, that evening was, this year was going to be scheduled, a house of worship, so that group will not be scheduled for that.
Yeah.
Well, then I would leave the rescheduling.
Yeah, I would reschedule that.
Yeah, sounds good.
We should not do it on the sixth.
So cancel the October 6th? That will leave us with only one in October?
Can we do two in September or November?
I'm not sure rescheduling is an option.
But yes, could we do two in September instead?
September, due to the holiday, it's kind of tricky.
Oh, that's another bunch of holidays in there.
Yeah, September, we have.
We can always keep it in if it's not a problem, or it's up to the board.
Well, we're, I guess my question on canceling the date would be, is that going to be in the middle of us having to continue work on our affordable housing? Are we going to be in the middle of something having to do with our master plan review? You know, we have to project.
Right.
Out a year and say, are we going to need that date? I mean, right now, things are pretty slow, but that doesn't mean it's going to continue that way.
Then I would say to keep it in, and if we get closer and.
Yeah, maybe keep it in and then cancel it.
And then cancel.
Yeah.
Right.
That makes sense.
If need be, if appropriate.
Yeah, I think.
So keep the October 6th?
Keep it, keep it in, and we'll cancel it if we can, depending on whatever our workload is at that time.
Okay.
Because we may have several things coming at us that we.
Okay.
Can't.
But, so what does that mean? So if we, so on the one hand, we were about to cancel it, and now, now we're not, because, why?
Because we can't predict our workload at that.
Right, but a minute ago, we cared about it, right? We cared about not scheduling this because.
Because it's a Jewish holiday, yeah.
Yeah. But now with this other thought, suddenly we're like, oh, forget it, we're going to keep it.
I'm, I'm going to say, I don't believe our school district considers this a Jewish holiday for time off for the kids, because it's not a, not a.
A high holiday.
High holiday.
And it may, if I may, there may be, and I apologize for jumping in, but there may be business the board has that may not be a public hearing.
Right.
Still a public meeting, of course, always our meetings are public, but it may be more along the lines of workshop-type business, or other deadlines that, you know, might not be problematic ultimately.
That was kind of my concern.
So that would mean, don't schedule applications on that day, on that night? How do we, yeah, I don't know.
We have an atheist applicant.
The board, the board can always, the board can always decide that the workload is such that, on balance, it's beneficial to cancel it, as opposed to simply outright cancel it now, not knowing what the workload may be.
Exactly.
As you get closer.
Yeah.
And then it's much more difficult to schedule and sunshine notice a now special meeting, as opposed to simply say, on balance.
I agree.
We, you know, we can, we can cancel it.
Yeah. I'm just the fill-in, but you know, but in my experience, you know, with things that have come up at our firm, for example, there might be things that don't require public meetings, like you may have to go into an executive session about something, and then you have a meeting that's scheduled, or there may be something like an ordinance, the master plan consistency review, which is not technically a public meeting, but you know, if, if there's something that the township committee wants. So essentially, you know, you can try not to schedule or not schedule any public hearings for it, but as Steve said, it's easier to cancel than to add back on.
Definitely.
Especially with a lot of the uncertainties that are going on with, you know, just, just all the different state laws and, you know, master plan, et cetera.
So is it possible to keep this on the schedule, but not schedule applications for that meeting, or?
Yeah, we can just note that to keep track of it.
Okay.
So we keeping October 16?
About St. Patrick's Day.
What about St. Patrick's? Are we keeping St. Patrick's Day?
I say yes.
The big celebration's always on the weekend anyways, right?
So usually a weekend.
The parade on the weekend.
Yeah. So unless you're going into the city, if we're taking that debauchery, I would say we're probably okay.
So keep, keep it, I would keep it, yes. Thank you.
So maybe, yeah, okay, so are we okay with the schedule as is then? So that? I just want to point out one thing, and I may not have noticed this last year, but it looks like there's a long gap between the December 1st and January 12th meeting, like a six-week break. Is that typical? I just don't remember, other than the summer cancellations, that something was blocked out for that extended period.
We usually don't have a second.
Usually in December, we only have one meeting due to the holidays and stuff like that.
Which is the first.
So we only have one.
So there's really none in December.
So this year, I mean, next year will fall December 1st.
I got you.
Normally it's like later, seven, eight.
Maybe that's why.
But.
Okay. And who's the January one? Seems a little late, but is that because of the calendar or the committee meeting?
Right.
Organization isn't too late.
Yeah, can't meet till many meetings.
All meetings are, will be, are held after the reorganization.
So, yeah. Okay, that's kind of weird. All right, yeah, that's fine.
And I believe next January, probably later, or reorganization.
I'm happy not to put my.
You know, first within the first seven days of the year.
Right.
Okay.
By the way, if we needed it, could always schedule a special meeting if we got a quorum, or even December 15th, perhaps.
I'm happy not to put my.
We could all attribute that to.
Twenty twenty-six.
Right, exactly.
And that's why. Karma thing. Okay, so again, we have no public here, so I don't think we would have a general public comments, and no reason for a closed session at this time.
And we don't have Joe here to make a.
Well, I talked to Joe.
We'll never get him.
And he said he wanted to make sure that we push this through.
Should we call him up and say?
I do have a question. So we're soon to get our input on the fourth round for affordable housing?
October 20 is the deadline for DCA, and October 20 is the deadline for DCA.
So they're frantically scribbling numbers, I guess.
They're, the computers are crunching hard.
I'm sure they are, okay. So there's nothing for us to do in advance of that, other than scratch our heads and say what we're going up with?
Well, yeah, nothing, certainly formal. As I had mentioned, at the town hall, we did the township hall, I should say, the professionals are already working on looking at last year's vacant land, last year, last round's vacant land adjustment, and making projections, and thinking about, you know, things in that regard. So the plans are, the process from an internal professional standpoint has begun.
Okay.
We're being preactive, not reactive, but there's only so much we can be proactive about, A, not knowing the number, and B, ultimately, we know all the rules of bonus credits, et cetera, that were afforded, and it's, once that number is formalized, then by January 30, the township will adopt a resolution with that number or a different number, depending on, and then we will have, by January 30, we will have the final binding number.
Right.
And at that point, I anticipate we'll have been as proactive as we can be to that point, and then we'll be moving forward full steam ahead, because it's only less than six months, it's about five months thereafter that we have to have our Housing Element Fair Share Plan in place, and our draft implementation ordinances in place.
If I could just make one last comment for the record, I attended the affordable housing presentation that was put on by our professionals and, and our governing body members, Mr. Rabitz, Donna were there. It was an outstanding presentation. I thought it was very informative, well put together. I think it answered all the questions we could answer at this point in time, recognizing that we are waiting for additional data, and, and, you know, I think that everyone came away feeling better informed about the whole process. So I just want to congratulate all of you.
I'll second that.
Who fingerprinted all that work.
I have our firm, we're glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need a roll call, vote on that. I told Paul not to do that. But you know, Paul, you know.
When the number arrives, will we, as a board, get to see that number and the calculations? Well, I guess I want to know, will the DCA say this is how we calculated the number, or we just?
The calculation.
Send in a number, here's your number.
It's in the law.
The calculation is codified in the legislation, the methodology.
Well, it's a reference to a 250-page thing, right?
Yeah.
It is, it is. But the difference is that now, you know, even though it's hard to parse, it is, it is there. In the past, it was all sort of being done on the fly, but you know, all of this will, you know, it will be explained, you know, over the time. But yeah, when the, we know, and I can just say, you know, at our firm, Paul and Liz are, you know, we're, we're going, approaching all of these as, like, the timeline sticks as it did, as it is in the legislation, you know, everything will be ready to go before those dates hit, so you can do those quick turnarounds, like Steve said, with the, with that. But yeah, with the, with the number, I'm not sure exactly how it will be distributed, but you know, it'll of course be, you know, the township will know it.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, so.
My understanding is there's supposed to be a report.
Yeah.
And I understood that to mean at least some explanation as to how the Jacobson, quote unquote, methodology is implemented and effectuated at a state level, and then, correct the term, but brought down, for lack of a better term, to the regional level, and then brought down to the municipal level.
Okay.
So we're supposed to see that.
Yes.
Just like we're supposed to see everything else, on or before the October 20th. And certainly, in my opinion, being able to examine that is important in order to comfortably adopt the resolution with that number, or for that matter, comfortably adopt the resolution with a different number, because, and this is just my opinion, this is not anyone else's opinion, given that the methodology is statutorily provided for, one would think there's not a lot of wiggle room if the methodology is properly utilized and implemented by DCA. But I would always reserve the right to argue I'm an attorney.
If the Jacobson opinion is completely clear, and if it's, if it's well implemented, properly implemented, yes. But those are two very large assumptions.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
Do we have like a range of what we're expecting? Or is there a clue? Or we have no idea at all?
I don't want to, you know, I don't want to.
I mean, you're, obviously you're planning on, something must have an idea of what.
Nobody wants to give out.
Nobody wants to guess.
Every municipality, when someone says, yeah, but can you pull it? No, it's just, you don't, you don't want to be high, you don't want to be low, you don't want.
Well, when the person mentioned a thousand last week, and you said, let's hope it's not a thousand.
Well, that's, yeah. Let's put it this way, I think it's safe to say, and I won't say anything more than this, but I always think it's safe to say this fact, the third round was a 26-year round. That's a fact. The fourth round is a 10-year round. I'm not suggesting someone take a certain number mathematically divide by whatever that number would do, but if one takes those two facts into mind, perhaps you can go ahead and have your own speculations as to what range it may be. I won't say anything more. Other than that, it's a rank speculation.
Okay.
So the work that's been done, we're doing so far, the open land assessments, reviewing the last one, which is not necessarily, it's like, it's part of the, it's included in the methodology, is this is a way to address.
Well, that's a way of addressing it without getting into too much detail. The vacant land adjustment that was done before is being, as I understand it, updated, because it's been six years, 2018?
About then, yeah.
About six years.
And it's, not every town does them, you know, in some towns, if you have, if you have the ability to do that, you know, we're briefly just updating it to reflect current conditions, so you, we have, everyone has the most accurate assessment of what's going on.
And the vacant land adjustment doesn't change the number.
No, right.
But what it does is, it changes, it's utilized to.
Realistic.
Break out the number between what is the realistic development potential, and sometimes referred to as the harder of the two numbers, if you will, that needs to be addressed more direct, through more direct mechanisms, and the unmet need number, which is the balance of that total number, which is addressed with less direct, or can be addressed with less direct mechanisms, to speak broadly. So I always view them as two sort of baskets or columns or whatever in my mind can visualize, one versus the other.
Yeah, no, exactly. And so that, you know, the, the details will have changed since the last round, but you know, that, that kind of inherent thing is still part of the.
Mechanism's still expected to be utilized, and that's why it's being updated by the planners and focused on, you know, for utilization in this next, in this round, because it will undoubtedly be a part of the analysis and how the Fair Share Plan, Housing on the Fair Share Plan, that'll be adopted on or before June 30.
First DCA has to get to October 20.
Yeah, well, yeah. All those numbers are, by the way, in the, all those dates are in the statute.
Yes.
So, so, yeah. If, if DCA doesn't make the October 20 date, there's nothing in the statute that gives anyone any more time, unless the statute gets amended.
Which they, which they have done.
They've already missed the June date, and got it changed to a September date for auditing of certain fees.
Yeah, so we're not, we're just not sure how it's going to go, but everyone's progressing that every, these dates are the set in stone dates.
We won't miss any deadlines. Can't, can't promise DCA won't, but we won't.
Thank you.
Any else?
Yes.
Got a motion to adjourn, since Chair was not here?
Move to adjourn?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can adjourn, thank you very much.